Go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America, and to the citizens of it. For which fans, one nation, under our individual right to protect us from all.
Thanks for all coming. Uh, start off with the signature folder. I guess we had one timber cut.
Yeah.
Yes, up at Simon Hill. We also had, uh.
Two Ds.
Two Ds redeemed for tax-dated property. Came in paid the full, that taxes, so that was good. Uh, make a motion to prove manifest dated August twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, in the amount of twenty six thousand, seven hundred and fifty six dollars and fifteen cents.
No second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve the manifest dated September fourth, twenty twenty five, in the amount of thirty seven thousand, three hundred and fifty three dollars and sixty eight cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve the board of selectmen submitted, dated August nineteenth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mail.
No mail.
No mail?
No mail.
That's okay. Uh, you're up. Tyler.
I'm ready. Uh, August. Three hundred and fifteen calls for service, we had nine arrests. Which is quite few. Uh, eight offense reports fulfilled, fifty seven motor vehicle stops, six motor vehicle accidents. And the K nine was deployed out two times, once for the street failure, and once for a track. That's all we got.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
Thank you, I just have one thing to say.
Please.
Please, he's not here, but give our condolences to Sergeant Baker.
I will.
They have to board, so.
Yep.
Sergeant Baker had a death and family case, if anybody's looking here or something.
I know about it, yeah, Tyler right before me.
I will, thank you.
Okay. Any questions from the audience for Tyler? No? Okay, great, thank you very much Tyler.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on. Chief.
Very, very busy month for August for us, forty two calls. I think that's our busiest month of the year so far. Of those forty two, two of them were medical calls at Green Mountain Treatment Center. And we did have two ambulance transports in the F and M ambulance.
Due to action not available?
Um, one of them was a firefighter that was injured during training. So we elected to just take him ourselves rather than calling out action out.
Right.
And the other one was a mutual aid call to the town of Madison while they had their big fire at the mill.
Okay.
Chief wasn't there? At our last meeting, you transported two.
Yes.
Oh, that's true.
You went mutual aid?
That was the Madison. That was mutual aid to Madison that night.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
So it's like your busiest day is Saturdays.
Yeah, by far, we had sixteen calls on Saturdays, definitely our busiest day of the week.
You're remaining at station on Saturdays, right?
We are, yeah, so we have someone in there nine to five every Saturday, and we've been consistently filling that, so. It's been a huge help to have somebody there in the station rather than us all coming from home.
Great.
Don't believe we had any major noteworthy calls. Quite a few mutually calls, there's been a lot of brush fires in the area and stuff like that, so. Um, we went to Ospey Corner for one, and we went to Wakefield for one.
One in Provis Lake? Eight seventeen, twenty five.
He always manages to find his way to W M R's camera, doesn't he?
I was trying so hard to hide behind the trucks, and that picture of my face that hit on W M R, you can see, he was like zoomed all the way in through the truck, through the woods to get my face.
I didn't see that.
Uh, that particular one at Wakefield was off of, um.
Pickpocket.
Pickpocket Road, thank you, the top of the mountain, likely caused by fireworks. That was a really long night for us, we got called out around midnight, and we got back to the station around five, five thirty in the morning, so. Although we got that little bit of rain, it hasn't done anything for the fire danger, it's still extremely dry, even though you might look at the surface and think it's, it's become a little bit more moist. The fires are still really bad, and they're not just the quick brush fires we're used to, these are the ones that are lasting all through the night. So, we still have a burn ban in town, we are allowing campfires if you have a category one permit. But nothing else, no brush piles, no new permits.
So, eight twenty six through eight thirty one, a lot of, uh. Burning.
Yeah, so once the burn ban went into effect, everybody started calling on their neighbors, so we were out quite a bit with people burning during the burn ban.
And they're just having, what were they burning, I mean?
The majority of them are campfires, or large campfires with illegal materials, stuff of that nature, so.
Right.
We have about three Saturday night.
Yeah, we can't emphasize that enough.
Would you mind just giving a quick description of what a category one is?
Yeah, so your category one fire is your, your small campfire pit, um, it's two to, two and a half to three feet in diameter. Um, and it has to be fifty feet from any structure, so that's purely your campfire that you're gonna go out and roast marshmallows on, it's not the pit that you're gonna use to burn sticks in the yard and stuff like that, it is truly your cooking and warming fire that you would use as a campfire for smores. That's what we're allowing. Category two is the bigger fire pits where you might burn sticks and stuff from the yard, and then category three is your brush piles. So we're not allowing two and three, we are allowing the category one, small, smores type fires.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Any additional questions from the audience, go ahead Scott.
Just out of curiosity, J T, how does that relate to the, um, fire warning signs in front of the stations? Like, would a low be okay for a category one, or?
So typically, um, your low, moderate, and high, you can still burn, we typically don't have burn bans during the low, moderate, and high. Once we get to very high, that's what typically would trigger the burn ban. So we've been living in the high, very high region for two months now. So, and I, I don't see that changing, I think this fall is gonna be very, very tough for us forest fire wise.
An extreme, I have seen in Carroll County in the years I was in the fire service, where they would actually ask people not to smoke up top.
Wow.
Wow.
Ooh.
It is.
Okay.
Wow.
Next.
I don't have any ultimate stats, but I did give the board this agreement, um, this is something drafted by the town of Conway. Um, as we've discussed in the past, Engine Two is currently out for its refurbishment, we're not expecting to see it back until March of twenty twenty six. So we're gonna spend quite a bit of time down a piece of apparatus. Um, just so happens the town of Conway just took delivery of a new fire truck, their old truck was going to go out of service and they were gonna put it up for auction. And they've offered to allow us to borrow it until our truck returns to town. Um, unfortunately, it's only a thousand gallons, whereas Engine Three was, or I'm sorry, Engine Two was three thousand gallons, so it's still lighter on water, but it's better than not having anything in the station. So this agreement is just a basic, you know, they're loaning us the truck, we're responsible for maintenance and upkeep while we have it, if anything breaks as a result of our doing, we're responsible for fixing it. If we crash it, we're responsible for that.
There's insurance on it, right?
The truck will be insured by Primex, it is currently through Conway, it'll switch over to our Primex policy. Um, I've already spoken with Primex, they just requested that we have an agreement in writing, and there's no issues with us. Putting it onto our policy while we, while we have it, so. The truck did pass its pump test already, so we know the pump is good, and it's going in for the state DOT inspection today or tomorrow. So it'll come back with a, an inspection sticker and everything else, so we shouldn't need to do anything to it. Um, it'll be a backup piece, it's not something we're gonna run out on every call with, but it'll be there should we need it.
Do I need to sign this, or is it?
Um, if the board's in favor of it, if, yeah, there's only one signature line, so if somebody would like to sign it, um, the truck is pretty much ready to come down here as soon as this agreement's in place, so.
What's the date?
Today, nine, two. I did attempt to send this through N H M A, but they will not review M O Us, so.
Yeah.
Well, they're pretty standard, you have that very standard.
Yeah.
Make sure Caitlin gets a copy once the signature is done.
Absolutely.
I should've said that we all have agreement.
Oh, you know, I would, I thought about saying something, I was gonna say, well, I guess we all agree to that, huh?
I should, sorry about that. Are we in agreement?
Yes, we are.
I really wanted to say something, but I just said, I was like, oh.
Thought you could've gave me a shot.
Good thing it's only two minutes of time here. Um, if you don't mind, just a quick update on P K while we're here.
Yeah, go ahead.
The tenants that have vacated the property were given until the first of the month to remove all of their personal belongings.
Yesterday.
Um, that was yesterday, yep, I did notify them of that in writing, so they were all aware. One of them reached out to ask if she could continue removing some stuff today, and I granted her that permission for today. So, um, tomorrow we'll be going in and locking all of the units that are not occupied, and there'll be no more access to the site for those folks.
Can the power be shut off in that building?
Thank you.
We can shut the power completely off, um, that was something I wanted to talk to the board about, do we wanna lose the exterior lighting, or do we wanna keep that in place for security purposes?
I can keep it on for the next.
I was gonna, my, my thought was to kill all of the breakers except for what controls the exterior lighting to just keep those couple lights on, but.
I agree.
Kind of, yeah. If there's no lights that are on, and we see lights there, then we know something's up.
That's fair.
That's one thing.
And we also, there's a, there's a camera on the property. So if the lights actually can drown out the images because of the I R on the camera that we have on the property. So if we kill all the lights, then we'll be able to see better with the I R on the camera, and if we see any sort of lights there whatsoever at night, then we'll know, hey, something's up.
I'll proceed with disconnect.
I mean, the other, the other thing for me is, I was there with you multiple times without having an electrician do an assessment on that building. Some of the hot wiring that was done, I don't know what it goes to.
Absolutely.
I don't feel comfortable leaving any power on in there, I haven't this long, and that's why I said thank you to Leah when he brought that up, I mean, I saw the power, the lights on last night, and I'm like, oh, as soon as we can get those off, the better.
Um, a couple of those units have quite a bit of trash that was left behind in them, and it's some pretty gnarly trash, so.
We're not gonna clean it.
Are we at a point where we just wanna lock the door and, and let it be, okay, I just wanted to verify that was the case. Um, the only other thing, the propane company, we did our propane fire training there last week. The propane company locked out a bunch of the tanks while they were there, I asked them to leave one tank in place for the unit that's still occupied, and it turns out on Friday afternoon, they pulled that tank. The only problem that poses is the two units that are occupied do not have hot water. So. So I don't know if we wanna try and get a temporary tank put back just to maintain the hot water until the end of the month, or.
Preciso is a tank.
It was a big tank, but we can just put a small temporary tank back, we don't need.
Put a two fifty back.
Yeah, it's just the hot water that it runs, there's nothing else running off it, so.
And how long are they there till the end of September? Okay, I just wanna make sure that we.
Was there any other option besides propane?
I mean, aside from replacing, you know, putting in electric, but. That's likely more trouble.
Who's the, who's the supplier?
It was Eastern.
Eastern?
So I can reach out and get a temporary tank put back until, yeah, September.
Are we gonna fill it, or just put a?
I would, half, I wouldn't go any more than half, they'll credit us for any gas left in the tank at the end, so.
Right, you, you.
Yeah.
Comments?
Who's the vendor? They pulled it because it was their tank, right?
Correct, they asked about pulling all the tanks, I said they can pull everything but the one, and apparently they just took them all, so.
Who was that vendor?
Our vendor's AmeriGas.
Without getting too far into that conversation, I would much rather deal with Eastern.
I agree with.
But.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, I, I think we have to.
Yeah.
Agreed?
No, I would agree.
No, I would agree.
Alright.
We could ask legal counsel, but what they think.
Rebecca or not?
It was four forty-five and the Saggers are booked for four forty-five.
Yep.
Rick, long time no see.
Yes, how are you doing?
Good, good. Nice to meet my neighbor. Wes, how's it going?
Good.
Good. You're up.
So where should we sit?
Your phone right here if you're comfortable.
So um.
You probably wanna juice yourself first.
Yes, um, this is Weston Sager. He's my son. Um, I'm, I'm Rick Sager. I'm his father. Um, we're both uh New Hampshire attorneys and uh New Hampshire auctioneers. And we have this business uh where we sell tax deed and properties for municipalities. And we sell a lot of it and uh Caitlin, are you Caitlin? Hi Caitlin. Caitlin reached out to us saying the board might have some questions. If you do, fine. If not, we'll give you a spiel of what we do and.
Go for the spiel. There's your points first and then we'll ask questions.
Okay, sure. So uh actually we were, we stopped by the PK, PK motel before we came over here. Um, there were a couple people in the parking lot. Um, so those are probably the people you're referring to. Um, we didn't attempt to go in anywhere. We just pulled in and left just to get an eye view of what's going on. So we think it's a good property that will sell well at an auction. Uh, what we do is pretty much everything. We give a contract to the town saying we're gonna sell this property on such and such a date uh or a date to be determined. And what we do is we do all of, we first, we look at the deeds to the property and make sure that this is something that doesn't uh expose the town to any risk by selling at this point. Usually that's okay. Um, then we uh advertise for an auction. We have just uh collaborated with an auction company out of Massachusetts. And with them and us, we have an email list of approximately, well, it's over twenty thousand. Uh, our nearest competitor has a uh email list of around eight supposedly, but that doesn't, that's not at all just uh real estate. It's real, it's real estate and um surplus auctions. So our list is just people who want to buy properties and invest or live in or or what have you. Um, we hold an auction, uh we have, first of all, we advertise, we put signs on the property. This is only one property, so we have probably a couple signs on that property. Um, send out um to our email list. We usually send three. We hold the auction at a place in the town. We can either hold it on the property. We tend to prefer to to hold it in a municipal building. Then we get a high bidder sold and we do the closing. And if the high bidder doesn't follow through because of buyer's remorse or whatever, uh, we force them to buy. Um, we also take a uh a backup bidder in case the town wants to release the high bidder from the bid. We usually extract some funds from the high bidder for our trouble and the town's trouble. And that's pretty much it. And we charge, we get paid by charging a ten percent buyer's premium, so it doesn't cost the town anything. You give us the property, we sell it, um, we send you a check and you get the property back on the tax bills.
So we give you the property just to sell it? We still hold a deed to it, right? Or you will?
Until it's transferred, you would, you would continue to make the property.
Okay.
Yes, and just so you know, all of these costs that you're incurring um are considered recoverable costs under the statute. So when the property is sold, you know, assuming it goes above a certain amount, the town will be reimbursed for, you know, getting a propane tank and these other sort of legal costs associated with the evictions, things like that. And you know, given that I don't think the town is in the, you know, landlord business, doesn't want to be. Um, you know, we can sell this relatively swiftly depending on whether a ninety day notice was sent to the former owners.
Which has been done, right?
I gotta send the new one. His just ended last week. Or PK's just ended last week, so I gotta send the new.
What do you mean it ended?
The original redemption.
Oh.
So um, you know, we can, we can, we just really need three days to market the property before it's sold.
So when in sixty days you'll, we'll notify you in the works.
What?
Sixty days we'll notify you?
So, so there's a, because the property was taken the last three years, I believe it was just taken this summer, correct?
Correct.
Yes, so the town is under a statutory obligation to send what's called a ninety day notice to the former owners. And then they have basically thirty days to notify the town as to whether they intend to redeem the property by paying the back taxes, interest costs, and penalty.
That's thirty days after the ninety days or?
No, that's just part of the ninety day.
Part of the ninety days, okay.
Three segments to a ninety day letter. So the first thirty days is that if, if the former owner says, yes, I do wanna redeem the property, then they have another thirty days to come up with the funds and actually redeem. And then if they don't, if that period lapses, then there's another thirty days theoretically in which to market the auction.
Got it.
Um, but we could know earlier depending on whether the former owner, you know, responds within that first thirty day window if this is a property that's suitable for for sale.
So can I interrupt your real quick question? So we've already done the first thirty day redemption thing.
It still has to have a ninety day. That was asked to legal. So even though we had a thirty day redemption notice that was sent because they intended to buy, we still have to send one ninety days before any auction or to take place.
So for education purposes for the future, on the onset of us taking it, can we do the ninety day letter then? Or is that, or does that have to be thirty, then ninety?
Well, the ninety day, it's called a ninety day letter because usually in the ninety day letter you have the date of the auction which has to be at least ninety days out. Yeah. And then then they have thirty days to say we're gonna buy it back, another thirty days to come up with the money. And then if they don't, another thirty days, we're selling it. And the, there's all sorts of thirty day periods with the tax dealing process. The thirty days that might have happened before, I don't know, could have been, you know, the thirty day notice prior to the tax deed. Um, I'm not sure. I don't know if this ninety day letter is usually sent out after the town takes title to the property.
How soon after?
It can be sent like the very next day.
See that, so the original ninety days could have started at, on July fifteenth.
If the notice had been sent out, you're in, I don't know what the, I haven't seen anything, so that, but that would be out of the case, just to give you a sense of the timeline, yeah. And we have a template we could provide to you, which fill in the blank and set it up.
That'd be good.
Sounds like that.
Right, um, question as far as the minimum price. I mean, we wanna, we keep our mon, the taxpayers' money.
Sure.
There is a minimum bid?
There could be, we generally recommend that you sell it with no minimum bid, which is called an absolute auction. And why do we recommend that is because if you don't get the minimum bid, we still have the property. Um, sometimes towns opt to do uh what is called, we can call that Weston, a uh. It's like, uh, like town confirmation or select board confirmation. So you set like a soft minimum and then if it's close to that, the, you know, representatives from the town could say, yeah, that's good enough and then approve the sale. Yep, we have a decent real estate market right now. It's getting a little softer. So if I were you, I would recommend selling it as soon as.
Yeah, we're tomorrow.
I'll get that out.
Get the letter out tomorrow. And by December second, we should be able to get it off our hands.
December third technically.
What, yeah.
But yes.
Yeah, it's um, it's a really good thing, you know, for the community also to just get this generating tax revenue again. So towns can, we have not only to get this, you know, get as much money as they can back that the town is owed, but also so it can begin generating, you know, revenue again for the community.
Totally agree.
Do you have an idea approximately how much town is owed for back taxes?
Ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and change.
Okay.
Well, that's without all of these fees tacked on that they've now identified that we could.
That's just the taxes.
That's only what was in the redemption notice, right? The back taxes penalty.
So, sorry.
Costing, so notices, mortgage searches, searches.
But, yeah, replacing all these people.
Yeah, so we have obviously other stuff that hasn't, yeah.
Yep.
So you're looking at probably a hundred and twenty.
Okay.
Have we been offering, I mean, there's been a couple offers already over one fifty.
I can't guarantee what you're gonna get, but I would be surprised if you don't cover all your costs.
I, I kinda agree with you.
No, it's nice, I, you know, didn't realize how much land, you know, is associated with this. I think that's really the draw.
Riverfront.
Definitely.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because it might be a tear down based on what we've.
There's definitely not gonna be a motel in one.
I'm not gonna, I wouldn't go so far as to say that.
But they have the codes and everything else.
Well, yes, but the only reason why I say that is, I mean, nobody would have ever anticipated, I mean, you guys are familiar with what everyone called the brick manor by Ospey Owl. That was, that looked like a skeleton and was reborn to what the beautiful place you see it is now.
Yeah.
And it was literally just the frame. It was the skeleton.
If the bone got in, you have something that you can do there.
And the bones of this building are still good. I mean, most of, you know, everybody like, ooh, you know, mold and things of that nature. Mold only goes into like porous things and it can be stopped as long as you take it out, the sheet rock, the insulation, the soft items. Um, it can be easily cleaned off and or mitigated from studs and of course, concrete and things like that. So you'd be surprised, um, and once you get it down, I mean, it was drop ceiling. You know, the chief can attest to this, all three floors were drop ceiling. That gives you your exposure to all your utilities that are easily removed. Take that out and you get everything. So I really wouldn't be surprised if it was, if it was not a tear down. There are definitely structures there and I don't know how much of the property, there's forty-four acres, I believe it's forty-four acres.
Yes, forty-four.
Um, if you look at our new updated mapping software, you're welcome, by the way, we did that just for you.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
The Axis D I S, um, there are, there are five extra buildings that are identified on that that are not there. So that's something else we're trying to correct, but all those buildings aren't there, so.
Well, we're gonna go, if we get the contract, we'll go, we'll photograph the heck out of it. Um, all those photos are the good ones. Go up on our website. And we all, we'll also ask the town to provide us whatever documentation you have. That also goes up on our website that we uses the number of calls to you about, you know, you know, do you have the tax card, you know, go on the website. And regardless, you can just send all those phone calls to us and we'll do it.
So we have a additional properties too that.
We have one right now.
Huh?
We have one right now.
The one on Green Mountain?
No, no, remember? We have High Watch and the Pymera One, they're, they're a redemption.
Based on, I mean, that list that Elena gave us for other properties as well.
So we might have a half a dozen.
So we have long outstanding properties that the town, the town hasn't done an auction.
By eight years.
So, I mean, there's some other properties too that we're just now identifying in preparation for you guys coming tonight.
Yeah.
Um, and getting, getting ready for all of this that we're most likely um be looking at that we have to discuss, so.
Are those properties held by the town for more than three years?
Yes.
That you're talking about? Great, so we don't have to do a ninety day letter for those.
Yeah, there's just, there's two properties right now, PK and the one on High Watch.
Yeah, whatever you got, the more the merrier, get a bigger deal and. Yeah, there, there tends to be sort of also like a waterfall effect, like you have a really good property at one of these auctions, like lesser properties that'll raise the floor for those.
More, more influx of people looking into it.
Exactly, yeah. And we also, we take bidders live, we like to do a live auction. We also have online, so we can have online bidding. Yeah, so we have like a live webcast that goes on during the auction so they can bid in real time, which we find is actually very helpful. It's often people from the town who have a conflict who still wanna be at the auction. And we had a guy at a recent auction who was from the town but was in Minnesota and actually got one of the properties bidding on the live webcast. It allows for there to be a true market in the room, which is kind of our job.
Yeah, something like Gary Wallace.
Yeah. Plus lawyer, yeah.
I was gonna say somebody else, but I really would have. First name is Harry, last name is S W M. I wasn't going as far as there.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Audience? Yes, we're good. Thank you very much.
So we also just have some, I just made some printouts for you. You can review it just by the company and it's a contract we signed with Tuffler recently. Um, there's just a few copies of that. You can take a look at that.
At your leisure. Appreciate it. Yeah.
Where are you folks uh, where are you folks based on? Ospey. Oh, okay. Yep.
Right, uh, the.
Traffic Circle.
Traffic Circle.
Snith Building that's.
Twenty-eight.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, that's what we use for our headquarters for our auction businesses too. I live in Wakefield. He's just moved to Wolf Rock. Yeah.
Awesome. We're good.
So um are you gonna vote at some point whether you wanna, want to go with us or you just wanna go with us and start? I'll get you the template regardless.
Just wanna go. That's a no, yeah.
Make a motion.
I make a motion. We hire your services.
I'll second.
On paper?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, we'll get you a contract and uh I'll get you that ninety day template tonight.
Awesome.
Yeah, because I have a longer drive, which is unusual for us. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you, Wes. Nice seeing you again.
Good to see you.
Melissa said hi. She sent me the message. I'm so glad.
Hey Wes, nice seeing you again.
Thank you.
Just good seeing you.
Yes. I'll be in touch, Caitlin. Nice to see you.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
On the hawks, coming down.
You don't have to go do it and do it soon.
Rebecca here?
It's good.
That is good.
Uh, five o'clock, we have to do Nate. Nate, you're up.
Come on down.
Leo brought that, I think, G2.
Can I have it for one second real quick?
Yeah, come on up, sit up here.
You can still come up.
I just got a message from the Conway chief. They just approved it in their meeting right now as well and they signed their copy. So he has a signed copy that he wants to get our signature on. Would the board authorize me to sign their copy and you sign us the official copy?
Yeah, just, yeah, put my name in, just uh put your initials.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Howdy.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Great.
School board member.
Yes.
How's it going?
Great.
You got, you got some number answers for us yet?
Uh, numbers, well, finance, we haven't started the finance franchise yet.
What about last year's?
What do you mean last year's?
So we were having a conversation about, that we never did get an answer to, so. And that's at no fault of our previous school representative by no means.
We're talking about.
Has he tried as well?
About like.
The, the, the math that just didn't add up and the justification for that and.
Sure, so uh we had a chat at the last, at the Brookfield School Board meeting. Uh, I was in Brookfield. Um, and I was, uh, they had the similar questions about numbers and stuff. And um I suggested then it'd probably be great to have a meeting with the superintendent and the business administrator and the select board here in Effingham to, to understand the list, right? Uh, and how, you know, how we, you know.
Come to those numbers?
How we get those numbers and how we dispute those numbers, so. Um, I guess the list comes out in February, right? But I, is there, but if there's questions about last year's, then we can, we can.
Schedule a meeting ahead of time?
Yeah.
I, I, I just wanna, I think you're going with the student list, if I'm correct.
Correct.
We're talk, no, we're, we're talking about, I didn't correct, correct me if I'm wrong. I think he's asking, so last year we had a sheet provided, it was on an Excel sheet that kinda went over the calculations of the tax rate.
Yep.
And um what Effingham share, so to speak, was.
Yep.
And the equations that were listed on there did not add up to the state portion or the local education portion. And that's where we're trying to figure out where the numbers came from.
Okay.
Am I correct, Chris? Is that where you're looking at that?
I'm hoping at some point in time, maybe.
Can you, yeah, if I could get a copy.
Maybe he's quietly gonna say, stay silent in the back, but he probably knows exactly what that form is called.
It's the MS.
I'll just offer my recollection of this series of questions. We ultimately handled that the capio Bledis, who's the financial person for the SAU.
Right.
And she was tasked with following up on that. Now, I have knowledge that she may or may not have provided four figures at this point. Uh, but that was where the buck stopped as far as my communication.
You're, you're absolutely, your recollection is absolutely correct and, and she did, but it was essentially for, for all intent. You're, you're absolutely, your recollection is absolutely correct and, and she did, but it was essentially for, for all intents purposes.
Give me a moment, I'll go print it.
It was the exact, yeah, it was the exact same calculation that was returned to us, so that's why I said, even after you, you know, were no longer in that seat and, and Nate was elected, there was that timeframe and it, we were still left scratching our heads with, without an explanation.
It could have been simply an error on her part that she said get her on file and did something like that. I would just follow up, the retailer, saying, hey, what the heck's going on here?
Yeah, when we had the graduation ceremony and, um, I'm testing his memory now, um, the advancement of the sixth graders, we, we chatted about this and talked about that very specific equation and you had some mathematical question yourself that you guys were.
Yeah, yeah, cuz I called back to her before I even became a board member, to, cuz I had questions about the formula. And she sent me back the whole, like the, her spreadsheet, uh, this would have been for the twenty-four, twenty-five, you know, distribution, I don't know what you guys, which one you guys.
That was the one we were talking about, was the twenty-four, twenty-five, so.
Okay.
And the explanation, it just, um, it, it's not my strong suit and I quickly sat, I quickly sat here and.
Well, I, yeah, it's a very complicated formula.
Yeah, and did the math.
Because I guess, uh, you, you base it on one, you know, one, you know, evaluation, but it's different when you bring it down and it's, it's, uh, she sent me another form, she sent me the actual formula, um, from the, yeah.
That's what we had last year.
I think it's the same one I have too.
Yes.
Oh, so you said it.
I'll also throw in, I recall some conversations at the S A U that there were some issues with the state that, uh, the portion of formulas were changing. And you probably know also that the Department of Education was changing what funds that were gonna go back to the school district. Those were a number of things that were in motion at the time and that could be a piece of it too, is that she just didn't have all that information yet. Just for future reference, the S A U starts working on budgets in October. So they'll be work, starting to work on the, not next year, but the following year's budget in October. Cuz the one you voted on in March will be, well, actually the one that starts now.
Yeah, July first, so.
So October.
So when they start the budget process in October, it'll be for twenty twenty-seven?
Twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Right, twenty-six, twenty-seven, yeah, cuz our, our, our calendar starts in July, so the new budget started in July.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Caitlin, is this the original one? Because I do know that, um.
This is the one I had, it could have been.
It's Ca- Kathy, right?
Kathy.
This is from Kathy, correct.
So Kathy did like move stuff around and then sent it back to us, but ultimately.
Yeah, this is the one I had that was updated.
When you add all the columns, it still didn't.
Yeah, that's fine, I, I'm, I'm happy to put a meeting together with her and the, and the superintendent and you guys to talk this. I'm not the business administrator, so I, I, I had the formula too and it doesn't, you know, it's, I agree, it's not, it's not straightforward, you know, it's not like apples, you know, you figured you'd just be able to multiply through, but it doesn't, it doesn't work like that, so.
It doesn't.
And I mean, it's, it's not direct targeting, right, so we always, cuz, cuz I mean, yeah, we, we wanna understand and then from, from, and I'm sorry.
No, no, please go ahead.
Getting diarrhea in the mouth, they, when it comes to this. So when it, when it comes to this, right, so, um, you know, like, the, the, the results of the, the vote.
Yep.
In the newspaper, there was shade thrown at Effingham for, oh, Effingham once again didn't support, you know, the administration and the school district and stuff, and I mean, that's is it really necessary? I mean, we're, you know, we're talking about education, we're talking about the lion's share of our tax rate. Our tax rate, twenty-seven dollars a thousand, almost sixteen dollars a thousand of that is for Governor Wentworth's school district. It's a lot of money for us, so if we have questions.
Yep.
I, in my opinion, they should be bending over backwards to answer any of our questions. In any other school district, even in their own, their own, you know, their own town for that matter. But, you know, from the outsiders looking in, it's the six, seven towns in the, in the school district and this has never changed. You know, when, any kind of shade that's thrown towards any of these outlaying towns, it's, it's like you, we, we are paying our fair share and you hold the lion's share of the school district's assets. We have an elementary school here, Uderm has one, Brookfield has one, Middleton, Ospey, you have two. Plus you have the art center, the high school, the athletic fields, the S A U office, the bus garage. Um, I'm sorry that we have questions, it's no offense, we have to answer to all of our constituents and the taxpayers.
There are questions and, and so, uh, so this year, right, uh, will be a new contract year for, for the teachers and stuff, so, um, obviously that's kind of, you know, increased the budget. So we're part, you know, part of, I'm part of the community issues committee and that's, our job is to, you know, that's, that got restarted this year to get out to, to talk to, you know, you know, people, you know, taxpayers, parents, you know, boards to understand so that we, you know, we want it to be transparent, right? We want you guys to understand what, what goes on and, you know, what the tax dollars are going for, it's right, I mean, that's, it's at least, you know, I think it's a simple, simple ask for sure, so. Yeah, I mean, um, to Jim's point, yeah, they, they're coming up with the, uh, the finance committee will be, I'm not on the finance committee, but, um, they'll be starting to meet here pretty soon. I'm, I'm hoping to push to have some of those meetings in other towns, um, to help spread the, spread that wealth out, cuz usually they're at like the middle school in Wolfboro, but um, you know, cuz obviously it didn't fail, just in Effingham it failed in, I don't know exactly, but Ospey failed.
Almost, district-wide.
Uh, Uderm I believe failed, so yeah, I mean, obviously it didn't pass, so we need to do a better job of letting people know, uh, so they can understand what's, what's going on, right? What the budget is and, and justifying, you know, those costs, so, yeah. Well, definitely, I will talk to Kathy and, um, Superintendent Caroline and we can, we can get a meeting to, so we can sit down and you know, we can address all those questions, I think it'd be the best way to do it, cuz I don't have the answers either, so I, I can have no problem going and talking to them and getting a meeting set up. We can ask questions about the, about the list as well, so have no problem getting that set up. I don't know if there's some day of the week that works best for you, better for you, so I can throw some times out or.
Pretty much all of them, yeah.
Got it.
Yep, got you, I have to rush this time here, so.
Yeah.
Before the snow falls.
Sure. Yeah, those are great questions to get answered, especially where we're getting into the budget season, so.
Any, um, major capital outliers that we're aware of outside of carpenters, roof issue?
No, I mean, it looks like, uh, it looks like a lot of that, we don't have, technically we don't have an R F P yet. Um, we're still working with the contractors, they, it's a big job, but a lot of it will be covered under insurance, so we're, we're hopeful for that, so. And they've already, they've already taken, we've already taken some money or appropriated some money from the trust fund or above, um, so that you know, something that will be able to help go towards that as well, so. We don't have a number, but we will have a live meeting this week and they're supposed to get an update on the carpet, hopefully we'll have a, a quote of some sort for the cost.
And I only have one more thing, so again, in the, in the, um, change of election and cycle and stuff like that, what was the ultimate result of the testing that was done on the athletic fields?
Um, I kinda, yeah, came in the middle, but the, all the, all the information should be up on the website and I can, I can send you a link to that, but they did do testing and, and post-testing and it seems to have passed, but.
Okay.
We can, I can send you a link to the, there's a whole webs, there's a whole, on the website now, the website has changed, we've gone to a dot gov website to make it more secure, but there is a whole, like a whole section of the website that I, I'm happy to send you the link to that.
Yeah, you, and you have my email.
I do, yeah.
So, um, obviously you know what I'm referring to.
Yep.
So.
Yep.
So the athletic fields, the football field in particular, which I believe has other sports too, I think cross lanes and that as well. Um, so that's not gonna have to be mitigated this year?
Well, they already, they redid the turf, it's all redone already, they did it this summer.
Okay.
And they're already back playing on it.
That costs us, costs the county, I mean, the.
It was, it was all part of a, it was part of the trust, so every year we put money away and it was all, you know, it was, it came out of the trust fund for this, for the turf. So no, you know, no additional increase to taxes, it was.
They were gonna play better.
I don't think so.
I know.
Great question. I played on a dirt field with rocks and boulders and. Jim? Say, I know.
If I take, from my unique position of being a district predecessor, I would say, don't shoot the messenger over there. I feel the school district, its budgeting process compares to any of these other large school districts.
Claremont.
Terms of.
Claremont?
Wow.
Oh, Claremont, well, you know what, I would not even say that that's far-fetched. The problem isn't the state, the problem is the state keeps getting sued in, in Supreme Court, state Supreme Court to adequately fund education, the state keeps losing and keep saying, what are you gonna do about it? And they just keep pushing it down to property taxes to fund education, it's all illegal. And it's the, the people we keep sending to conquer who could fix it, but don't, and they just keep making it worse. They reduce funding for small towns, they start giving all of our tax money away to rich people who have kids in private school. It gets worse every session, that's the problem, it's not that Governor Wentworth has a bad budget.
And the irony to that is, one of the leading sponsors in all of that, beginning of defunding, I don't care what they say, defunding public education, has his house on the market and is moving away.
Yeah, and it's the house, I'm not sure where he got all this money, but, yeah.
Anyway, we're not gonna go there, so.
But I, I just wanted, yeah, don't jump on me too hard, cuz it's, it's.
So, perfect, we're talking about politicians, elected officials, I think, me personally, and I think he does too, everybody should know exactly what our, as constituents, what our elected officials are doing or not doing for us.
That's true.
You caused all of this, you pull a pin and a grenade and you throw it in the room and then leave the room. And we're left picking up the pieces.
All right, going forward.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Is there a list available for non-essential, he put the, while there's essential, but I mean, as far as teachers versus, um.
Support staff?
Support staff.
So there's a right to know, uh, like wage list, um, on, is that what you're looking for?
I don't really care about the wage list, it's just, what's your ratio?
It's on the district website.
Numbers.
It's all on there?
Yep.
Okay.
I can send you that, it's, it's on the right to know, if you go into the right to know request, there's a wage list that tells you what everybody makes and who they are, like how many people.
And what their profession is?
Um, I'm not sure it says their profession.
And that's what I wanna know, how many teachers?
How many teachers?
Yeah, what's the ratio of teachers versus, uh, non, uh, non-essential people?
Um, I can look it up, but, uh, there's probably, the, the, actually, the state has a pretty good, they have a really good website for the education, they just revamped the whole like, uh, like, they have a lot of different ways you can look at, like, you can look at town by town, like cost per pupil, you can look at your proficiency rates.
Yeah.
You can compare, but they have, yeah, they have, they have a breakdown on there too, I can send that to you, but I can find out.
Yeah.
Do you want like for everybody or?
Yeah, the, like, we're school district, what's like, if you have, how many?
Average or do you want like just Effingham, like, like?
No, the whole school, how many employees here, a thousand probably, total, eight hundred?
I don't know if it's that many, but I, I don't wanna.
How many, less?
Six.
Jim?
I, I think he even has a guess, you know, it's, uh.
Well, we should know.
Yeah, no, I forgot.
You should have this info.
Yeah.
I'm no longer there.
I know.
But.
I mean, I, I could throw out a number like six hundred.
Okay.
I'm not sure it's accurate.
So what's the ratio of teachers versus?
Yeah.
Support staff?
Yeah, that'd be nice to know.
I'm gonna say three to one.
Uh, we don't know, do you know?
You're talking about bus drivers.
I read it, yeah.
People in the kitchen.
I understand.
You know, there's a whole range of people who are support staff, and by the way, they just got their contract renegotiated last year. They got a long overdue raise because, I mean, it was embarrassing how low they were being paid and they're still not being paid really what they deserve, in my opinion, now that I'm not on the board. But, you know, at least they can sort of live on it. So, you know, there's a whole blanket stuff going on. But, you know, we're in a competitive market too, remember, I mean, you know, anybody who's trying to hire people for almost any job these days, it's not like you have a surplus, uh, so, you know, you, you gotta, you gotta treat them halfway decent.
Got it.
I have a question that maybe you can, um, find out for me, several people have asked me over the course of time, how many students are in our high school from Effingham? And in the middle school, we already know the elementary school, but every report I have ever read from the district never tells the specific town's numbers.
I think it's in the report card, it wasn't, I believe it was in the report card for last year, so every year the district puts a report card out and tells by, by the district, like how many kids from each town.
Each town, cuz what, the one I read, the, um, I guess it was the annual report that goes out, it does not specify the numbers, it, it gives the overall number.
And I saw that, and I think it's something we should add to the report.
We should have, yes.
I'm pretty sure it's definitely in the report card, which is kinda like a supplement to the annual report, kinda gives like some highlights, in case somebody doesn't wanna read the whole, you know, seventy-five pages of it, but, but, yeah, I'm pretty sure it's in the report card, but I will check.
If you could find out, I'd, I'd appreciate that and I know other people would too.
I have a question for Nate, um, is the September school board meeting at the Effingham school?
No, October.
October.
So September will be at the Art Center.
Okay.
And then, yeah, the October one is, uh, generally it's the same every year, it's October.
Okay.
Yep.
So just so people would know, they wanna go and, you know, wanna have to drive to Uderm.
Yeah, so it's at the Art Center next week, Tuesday or Monday, and then it will be, in October will be here in Effingham, so.
And Rose, any, oh, sorry.
Yeah, what's the date in October, you know that?
I can look it up.
Rose, anytime you see one of these sheets right here, so obviously our town is highlighted.
Right.
And the A D M is average daily membership, and that was based on two years ago, right?
Yeah, it's like in two, I believe it's two years past.
These, these calculations and the formulae was based on two, two previous years, right, ago, two schools years ago?
Yeah, I think so, I think that's what.
Oh, that's true, but it was just the previous year.
Okay.
So the two oh three point six?
So this says actual twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Yeah.
And this is the one we're working, okay.
Well, well, that's a year, remember that, the, the year is over, that's the new year.
Right, right, that's school year twenty-two, twenty-three.
Right, so it's just one year.
Right.
Right, ten-six.
Yes.
But it's not last.
What time?
Uh, it's, I believe, so it's six P M, but I believe it'll be non-public, so officially the meeting starts at six, but we go to non-public at six, so I think we actually start at seven o'clock.
Seven?
And what was the date, Nate?
Ten-six, will be next Monday, uh, the first Monday.
First Monday of October.
Thank you, Nate.
Yep. Katie, that of course.
Who else?
Katie.
Katie, yeah, another one.
That's my question.
Oh.
And then I think, um, Scott had.
Not necessarily a question for Nate, but I would, um, encourage, um, our school board rep to maybe show up at a more selectmen's and budget meeting as well. To Chris's point, a large part of our tax base goes to, uh, to the school district and at the same time, we're struggling to staff, fire, police and take her roads and the perception is that while we're tightening our belt, you guys are putting more punch balls in yours.
Sure, oh, I agree, and I would, uh, my suggestion would definitely be, um, to get to the finance committee meetings for the school board, cuz they do, uh, they do good, do a good job, cuz if, you know, if nobody, you know, if nobody comes and, you know, like, we were at Brookfield, uh, school board meeting in, uh, like last month and like one person showed up, it was the selectman from Milk Mill, and I'd say it like, you know, it, it just, you know, I think the more people that show up and, and can voice their opinions is, is important too.
I mean, I, I know it's in a couple of weeks, but would be helpful what you said, if, if there's a close, if there's a non-public closed meeting.
Yep.
They just have the date and the time, they are not specific, it's, um.
On the website?
From the last time I looked, yeah.
Yeah, so like, there should be one up for like, so there's one next week, there's an agenda out there today, so we, we set the, like, we set the agenda a week before, or the the chairman sets, sets the agenda the week before, so that gets all worked out, so usually a week before the meeting, you'll see an agenda, like, there's an agenda out there for that.
Thank you.
Of course.
And that is part of why, I mean, we had the conversation about him being more involved and being here, so why he's here today, so.
Agreed.
All right, any additional questions? Thank you very much, yeah.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Thanks, Travis.
I'll give you some answers.
See you next month.
I can make five, five's not bad, but I can't make the four o'clock one, so is it every week, is it every, once a month you have a five, or is it every?
Uh, no, every other.
Tuesday.
Every other Tuesday and, and we start it, we start at four and then review everything and the meeting starts at four-thirty, so I mean, we can make you for me. Chairman sets the agenda, but we can make you for later, so.
Yeah, we get some updates and then maybe I'll come back next month and talk to you about, you know, maybe setting up a meeting with you guys and stuff like that, any questions? Any questions I can get answered for you?
Sounds good.
Awesome.
Are you gonna like, set up a meeting or something, discuss all this?
Well, I, I think, yeah, I think we need to talk to the superintendent and the business administrator. I'm not.
I know, I know.
I don't, I, again, I'm not the expert. I mean, and I think, yeah, it'd be best for you guys to ask all the questions you want.
Right.
Rather than me like, just being the middleman, like, I'd rather, I'd be happy to come and sit with you guys and, or sit with them, so. I'll, I'll put them, I'll, I'll work with Kathy and the superintendent and, and get some times, shoot it over to you guys to see which ones work best, and we can, we can go from there.
Perfect, perfect.
So, so good.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Nate. Cool. Oh, yes.
Scott, Leo, while you do that, while you want me to get back in here, if I could just get out, so this way you do harm, I'm better.
So, Katie, you're up.
Do you have copies of my letter?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
In the.
It's in the business folder, I believe.
Yes, it is. I have copies too, if you need. For requesting permission to do raffle, we'd like to start selling tickets tomorrow at the library. And we will do the drawing on October eighteenth at the Street Dance. And we also want people to know the Street Dance at the library is also a volunteer celebration for any of the organizations in town. We try to get the word out so that people can come and say, oh, I'm gonna announce, you know, recognize a volunteer that did something for any of the organizations. We want it to be about that. And we'll have cake. But we're asking you permission to have the drawing.
What kind of cake?
In fact, that will determine.
I strongly recommend either cheesecake or carrot cake.
Oh, okay. I'll see, I don't know if I'll have it in.
We already approved the street dance, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, what time's the street dance? What time was that again? On the eighteen?
I think three to five.
Three to five.
Yeah.
So I make a motion to a support, to support the Friends of Effingham Library and their granting permission for their raffle to begin September third and running through to October eighteenth.
On second.
Oh, David.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
Rebecca.
Hello.
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 Hello. Hi. Um, yeah, you got my August report. Um, just finished it this morning. And thanks for fitting me in. We'll get it out of the way. Um, it's pretty straightforward. I don't think they're happy to answer any questions about any of it.
So four new applications for?
There were six. There were six permits. Six permits granted and two denied.
Oh, okay.
Although the two denied were on the same property. The applicant had, had put in two separate sheets, so I, sometimes I combine that in the routine, but in this case, since it was being denied, I thought it more appropriate to treat them separately since the applicant had done them separately.
So four approvals?
Six, I believe.
Six approvals?
Six approvals.
One, two.
Oh, from the, I'm looking at the mouse.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
And it's pretty, pretty straightforward. We had one house, we had a campground structure down at Province Lake RV. We had a porch being put on. We had a garage and a shop, being built greenhouse and a, a deck. Um, which is an interesting one, the last one on the list. It's a little tiny deck on one of those lots on the southern part of Province Lake that is like a tenth of an acre that went with Leland's Road properties. Um, a lot of those, the properties on one side of that subdivision didn't have lake frontage, and so they got these little bite-sized lots. And these poor folks went and jumped through plenty of hoops in order to be able to put a little deck there. I went and looked at it, it's pretty steep. And there were steps there years ago, but it had been so long, I couldn't grandfather beam. So they went through Shoreland, and they got the variances, and they've got, they've got an eight-by-ten viewing and swimming deck there so that they can use their, their lake access.
Nice. Any questions?
No.
No, just kind of a statement from our visit the other day, if you wanna, if you wanna discuss that now?
Yeah.
So the very first one, ten thirty-nine Green Mountain Road?
Yes.
We visited that property on Saturday.
Okay.
Um, and so if you wanna update, it's work in progress. And it's not as, not nearly as bad as it either once was or was previously reported.
You gotta send her pictures?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and it's still, it's still that property owner?
And I have photographs, yes.
Yeah, okay, so, so.
We have, I took photographs and everything that I'll be getting to you and the board and.
Okay, so should I remove it from being illegal and say that it's in progress, being dealt with?
I would say yes. Yeah, they said they were gonna license cars and.
Okay.
Like there's, you know, like a lot of the cars that were there, there, there are vehicles there that are registered, there was.
Okay.
Somewhere in the vicinity of six to ten cars that were registered.
Yeah.
That were, um, that may or may not have once upon a time, either they were replaced by other vehicle, you know, whatever. But, um, because there is somebody else living there, so.
They stated they would be in here to register the cars, so.
Okay.
And I have current registrations.
Well, I mean, I understand why I didn't wanna do a sudden, even the signage at the end of the driveway.
And we, we had, we had a very positive interaction with the, with landowner and.
Okay.
So.
All right, excellent.
What about the RV? Remove the RV?
Is there someone here? Okay.
That is.
Okay, all right. Well, I will change that on the, on my report. Um, the second one down, um, I did check at the registry, and there is no transfer of property yet. Although I think I said last month that I've driven by and it had said under contract, so we'll just keep an eye on that. And in fact, I'll go by again and see if the owner has, has removed the RVs, in which case, we can take it off the list whether or not it's changed hands.
Right, yeah.
So. So there we are.
Give me a second while I get my bearings. Wait, no, I was just looking at that. Something on the fourth, that, on twelve twenty-six, twenty-three, four twelve dash eighty-five.
Four twelve, four twelve eighty-five?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I never got any response to anything.
So where we looking here?
Legal.
Legal, you gotta take it.
We take it.
Yeah, once a notice of violation has gone out, and I don't get any response, I don't have any, I don't have any powers to do anything.
Right.
So we have to communicate?
Get it, get it something from that.
We have to decide what you wanna do.
Okay.
Basically.
We'll do that.
Um, but, um, but, uh, the, um, four thirteen, two oh nine, we did get results on that NOV. And there is sufficient cleanup, and we'll just keep monitoring it. It may, may backslide again, and then we'll do it again, but I think we've got.
Right.
People are trying to keep up. I mean, it's, that's the standard situation of an out-of-state landlord and tenants who are sort of not really keeping in line, and they are not necessarily keeping their shoulder to the wheel. But if we lean on them a little bit, it should keep it okay.
Right.
Okay.
All right. Okey-dokey, thank you.
I have something real quick.
Oh.
Yes.
Um, have you taken any driveway permits for six seventy Townhouse Road to add it, or address?
It's not possible.
Okay. Um, I've noticed a new sign has been put up on that property with six eighty-four Townhouse Road.
Two signs.
Two signs, I saw one of them.
Because with the other ones, I'm sorry, I stand corrected, the other ones on Champion Hill Road, that address is not correct, that is.
Right.
Same signage.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, as far as I'm aware, six eighty-four Townhouse Road does not exist, so I'm not sure why it's posted, but.
People put up signs because they want to.
Yeah.
They put out mailboxes because they want to too. I mean, you know, I don't really have any control over that. I mean, if you see, I mean, I'm always happy to answer, like.
Yeah, I just didn't know if there was something in process, or trying to make another driveway or something.
Not, doesn't, doesn't ring a bell at all.
Can't.
So.
Davis.
Right.
Davis property.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that just appeared a little while ago. It's in there for a couple of months.
Yeah, it was like three months ago, yeah.
All right. Well, feel free to email me or text me to do a drive-by or check a file or something like that. Happy to, happy to do that to.
Thank you.
To double check whether it's something, but I don't, I haven't. And you get, I mean, you're on the list for everything.
Notification anyway, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Something from.
Okay.
Thank, thank you.
Usually you ask it.
Yeah, yeah, any questions from the audience? I, look, I didn't see any hands raised.
No questions.
We're good. Thank you very much, Rebecca.
You're very welcome. Take care.
You too.
Tyler, you're back up again.
I'm back up again?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll take it, you guys do your reports.
Oh, wow.
I, I can go.
Yeah, I'll get you out of it. Is it gonna be long?
Uh, it could be.
Oh.
It could be a discussion. Do you want me to wait? I wait, I'm gonna be here anyway.
Okay, we'll wait. Selectmen's report.
Okay, I got the first. Um, basically, it's still the same. We've attended several meetings along with my other select people. Um, we are, I've been working with the Historical Society to try to prepare some stuff as we're getting close to the anniversary of the town. So, um, on Tuesdays, if anyone wants to come down and help, certainly we would appreciate it. Um, we're putting all of the documents into protective coverings and trying to separate everything within the towns. Uh, not only just Effingham, but Effingham Falls and, and even Freedom and surrounding towns that are all around the same time. So we've been doing a lot of work on that. Um, our Municipal Building Committee has been meeting every Wednesday. Uh, we still do not have, the floor plans are in the hands of the architect. So we're waiting for some of the floor plans to come back so that we can send out some stuff and get some, um, prices back from the various types of buildings.
All the floor plans?
Not all the floor plans. We don't, we have the municipal building floor plan, which is out.
I didn't know if I missed an email or something.
No, no, no. Um, no, you didn't.
Okay.
Uh, so they're working currently on the municipal building one up here. And that will go out to all of the different places. We have the, what is it, ICF, ICF?
ICF.
ICF block, Lester Building, Steel Building, and Timber Building. So we're going, we are looking for pricing on all of it to see what will be the most cost-effective. We're looking to have this building last fifty years, so we're looking at every aspect. Um, and that's about where we are now. We're just waiting now to get some feedback. And then eventually, soon, we will have the public meeting and give all of our findings. And that's it, other than the regular work we've been doing.
Thank you. Any questions for Rose? Good? Yeah, Chris?
Okay, so, uh, last Wednesday, I took a walk on Pine River Road with the road agent and the road contractor, Evans Brothers, um, to discuss the stumps from the trees that were removed. Um, the line share of the stumps will come out, that'll give us a much wider shoulder and area to dispose of runoff. Um, it'll hopefully alleviate the bowl effect that we currently have there. Um, it definitely, with the trees being gone, definitely set the light in. We did meet with representatives from Ospey Water and Sewer, because the water and sewer line does run there. Um, there is a culvert right at the town line, um, that is gonna be replaced. It's a three-foot culvert with you guys' approval, along with mine. Um, now is the time to do it. I'm gonna do my selling point, now is the time to do it. Um, there is, it's bone dry there, so there is no need for added cost for wetlands permit. Um, underneath my application, my, excuse me, my permit and license for an installer and, um, uh, maintainer license with no standing water there, we do not need, um, a wetlands permit. So we don't have to spend that cost. It's dry right now, is the time to do it. It is a metal culvert. It's a maintenance thing, so we don't really, it is a metal culvert. The bottom is, has several holes in it, three footer. We have one stick, um, at the, one stick is twenty feet. We do need more than that at the transfer station. So we'll need to purchase that, that can come out of materials. We do have money in the budget for that, as well as the stump removal. And also some ditching from the hill across from PK Motel down towards PB Brook. There are three cross culverts there um, that are filled in, or the water can't get to it, because again, the road was flat and there were ruts. Now that the, um, the road has been reclaimed, we can get some ditching done. And then, uh, in preparation for next year, stop to bring in material. Um, we have the funds now, the more work we get done now, um, the less money that we have to budget for, for that, um, process to continue next year for the paving, um, of the other half. That's that. Again, I did a site walk on property on Saturday and took some pictures. Uh, drove several other roads in town. Obviously, the, uh, the tree work has been, the brush clearing has been done on Elm Street.
They're working on, getting the dirt out.
Yeah, cleaning the dirt off from beneath the guard rail. Um, and the rest of the roads, I've driven ninety-five percent, ninety-seven percent of our roads, and, um, they're all in, uh, still holding up fairly well, considering the fact that we still have that rain. Um, really, our roughest road right now still is Pine River Road. Um, so.
So as far as the water line, you're in the house and on Pine River, there was no issue removing the stumps?
No, that, that's, there's one stump that's gonna stay because it is too close. Um, we do know the, the size of that stump, and it was a little bit more off in the shoulder, off the edge of the pavement. So we can comfortably, and we might cut it down, um, if it does become a problem. Because there's areas above it and below it where we can, we call a turnout, um, a water turnout. You can put the water. Um, and if you're removing snow, whatever, you're kinda, you know, it's, it's gotta be a lot wider anyway, but, um, it just, the, the taproots, pine trees don't have as deep a taproot as hardwood trees, but they still spread out a long ways. And we do not wanna get into an environmental nightmare of ripping up an eight-inch pressurized sewer line, so.
Can we?
That belongs to another community, so.
Can we grind it?
We can grind it, but it's even still. I mean, you're talking, that stump is in excess of fifty inches across, so.
Okay.
Or close to it, so.
Can I ask Chris a question?
Yes, please.
Chris, the culvert that you were talking about that exists now?
Yep.
Is that on the culvert, culvert, or was that Ospey?
That is our culvert.
It is, okay.
Yep, yep.
That's all I needed.
Yep.
Any additional questions? Are you all, you all set?
Uh, I believe so, yep.
Awesome. All right, between attending meetings, doing a site visit, and everything else, they cover all my stuff. Um, as far as the, uh, transfer station, I guess Thursday or Friday they'll be pouring cement.
Yeah, couldn't get, uh, concrete till Friday.
Yeah, up Friday. Okay, so.
You remind me of something else.
So we had to bring another dumpster in, because the steel dumpster was full. So we had to bring that one, it's up on top. For all the steel and everything else, but, yeah, they were good about it. Rikers didn't have a problem at all. So, otherwise, everything else is doing good. Transfer station's great, everybody's still not picking on time when you're supposed to be picking, but, I mean, waste management.
There's still a lot, kinda like scheduling.
Yeah, and the guy was off last week, the manager, uh, the supervisor. I had sent him an email, stated he was on vacation, so. I'll re, I'll be responding to him this week, give him a little.
Well, when you respond to him, ask him what he's doing about the, that individual's car at the corner of Bonningman Road and Province Lake Road that got crushed.
What do you mean?
Back in June.
Yeah, with the.
They still have been compensated, and their rental car ran out and.
Wow.
So, yeah, it was on the news, it was in the newspaper.
Really?
It was on WMUR. They're still waiting for relief from their car being crushed by the container that, it was of no fault of Effingham. Let me just start off by saying that, but it did come from Effingham, so.
I'll have to talk to Pete about that one.
Yeah, I mean, it was all over the news. Yeah, I mean, it was all over the news, and I mean, they still haven't got relief. They had a rental car which has since, you know, run out. They're looking for some sort of relief from that company and it's.
Okay.
Company that's arguing.
Yeah, yeah.
Wow.
Insurance should have jumped in on that one. So that's probably what they're waiting for is the insurance. So, okay. You got something else to go?
Oh, yeah, the salt shed has been cleaned out so that it can be rinsed. Did it get rinsed? Okay. Um, can you, just as a reminder, if you would please, and, you know, if that happened on a weekend or something, you want me to come down and help drag hose or something? I'm more than happy to. I've done that a time or two. The bridge as well, Huntress Bridge.
That's also on the agenda.
So.
Without urgent two, it's been tough.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, maybe there's relief in sight, you know, along its way, so.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Maybe I can pull some extra favors and then come with an operator.
So I've been trying to be pretty proactive.
Uh, wait, I guess we're done?
Yeah, we're done.
Yeah, you don't.
Good. I've been trying to be pretty proactive in our cruisers because our rotation's been a little bit messed up, our replacement rotation. Because we did get stuck with that one that was in the shop more than it was on the road that we decided to trade in after a year. So we're kind of, we're kind of really out of whack. We have the cruiser that's out back right now that's eight years old. Going on nine next year, and we're usually replacing them after six. It just had some routine maintenance, much needed maintenance done that we kind of held up to do. And it's starting to get really soft underneath and there, the mechanics were like, I don't know.
Soft, what do you mean, the frame?
Like the frame, the whole underside of it. It's getting up there in mileage too. So I'm trying to get and be proactive in not only maintaining the fleet that we have, but, you know, looking at the replacements.
What's the mileage on that one?
The one out back. So I think it's a hundred and thirty thousand, I believe. It doesn't get driven much at this time, but it's due to be replaced. The next cruiser in line to be replaced is technically due to be replaced next year, which is not gonna happen. Which is the 2020, which is the car I drive, and that's already at a hundred and eight thousand plus. So I'm trying to be proactive. I know that we.
So what do you mean? It's not gonna happen?
What?
You say it's not gonna happen?
No. What's that?
You said it's not gonna happen?
What's up?
The replacement car. The replacement.
Your car.
Your car.
Yeah, your car. You said you.
Oh, yeah, so.
There's two up for replacement.
So there's two up for replacement. Basically, so like, we were on a six-year rotation with our cruisers.
Right, and that one.
The 2020 will be six years old as of next year. We're gonna have a cruiser that is up for replacement that is gonna be almost nine years old. I know that we just, it went into a cruiser last year that was completely out of rotation due to the fact that we had the one that was giving us so many issues. It was not worth our time to keep putting money into when it only had thirty thousand miles on it. So what is in front of you is a, something that we have not done before. It's a, it's a tax exempt lease. It's not something that hasn't been done. The Town of Madison does it every year with their cruisers, or every time they get a cruiser. So what it is, there's, there's two different columns, which I'll explain. The leasing company is responsible for basically the entire payment of everything that goes to do with the, with the, with the vehicle being. Purchase of the vehicle and the equipment, so they can cut multiple checks to multiple different vendors if the town agrees to do the lease.
This is all the equipment here.
Yeah, so attached to this is the proposal for the cruiser from McMakin Chevrolet. And there's also an outfitting quote from H and D Communications. I reached out, I got a lot of different, a lot of different quotes for different vehicles because we've noticed, and it's been a trend, that as the Ford explorers get older, things start going wrong, and when they go wrong, they go wrong fast. Not to mention that we've had substantial recalls with them to the point that the 2020 that out there is basically from the front wheels back, they're all brand new due to recalls. So it's just, it's things we keep fighting. And actually, we just got another recall on that one for the engine. The whole bottom part of the engine needs to be replaced due to a recall, which we need to schedule. So I've actually ventured outside and I would like to go to a Chevy Tahoe, which seems to be the norm. A lot of the bigger agencies being, New Hampshire State Police is going to all those for all the troopers. Ospey has them, the Town of Madison has them, the Town of Tuftonborough has them. And I feel it's the best fit for the Town of Effingham due to the ground clearance, the four-wheel drive capabilities for, you know, the backroads that we do have and everything like that. Inside of this is two different options, one being just a lease for just the vehicle, and then one with the vehicle and the outfitting. The reason I did that is due to the fact that our, our secretary has not been here at all this year. There's, there's substantial extra funds within my operating budget that if the board would give me permission to do so, use that to outfit the cruiser this year. If, if we agree to this. That was one of my thought processes. So there's, there's two options.
So how much is the cost for equipment?
For just the cruiser, it's fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars even. The outfit cost is on the last page of.
Twelve three and ninety-five?
Twelve thousand, three hundred and ninety-five. And the reason being is all the equipment that's in the 2017 is extremely outdated. All of our cruisers are equipped with, with lights that during different times of the day, being at night, when you put the vehicle in park, they actually dim and slow down, which is a safety feature designed to, you know, keep motors from striking the cruisers, and it's proven to be effective. That one doesn't have that system. All the lights in that are outdated and they need to be updated. The other two cruisers in our fleet all have that equipment and are all up to date on that stuff. So what I would like to do, this is where I wanted to provide you both options. I feel the best option would be to, to do the four-year lease with the vehicle and the outfitting on the.
Can you do, I mean, versus three years, what we do now, replace on a.
And, and the reason I say that is because the cruiser, the cruiser that we're, I'm proposing is a Chevy Tahoe. It's a lot beefier of a car. The motor's better and it's gonna last longer. He's a Ford guy, so.
I mean, it's call a spade a spade. I also work in a highway garage where they do the maintenance on the Ospeys cruisers. And they also have, I mean, they're not event free, let's just say.
Yeah, and unfortunately, there's not one cruiser that is out there that doesn't have problems. And you're gonna have to weigh your, weigh your options. We've seen the, the issues that we get with the Fords, the other cruiser option being a Dodge Durango have motor issues. The oil coolers aren't very good in those and they blow.
And it's twenty thousand dollars more for. Isn't that, that Durango substantially?
No, 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 no. The Durangos are basically between an Explorer and a Tahoe. They're kind of right in the.
I thought they were the highest.
The Tahos are, are the most expensive. The Fords are the cheaper of the option.
Of course.
Durangos are in the middle, and then Tahos are on the effort end.
Okay, so you're gonna, if you're proposing and go for your plan, you're gonna add fifty-five thousand.
Nope, so there's, there's two columns there. One's just the vehicle only, you'll see.
Yeah, but you say you're gonna take up the, the outfitting out of your.
If, if the board, if the board's okay with that, yes.
Okay, so I'm just sticking with the first column.
Okay.
Okay, so you're looking at fifty-five thousand, four years. You don't mind every, instead of every three years, now it's gonna be every four years to replace a vehicle?
Correct, once we get back on, on the correct rotation.
Okay, and on the ETF fund, we fund the budget, what, ten thousand a year?
Fifteen.
Fifteen?
And what my hope to do was to sit down with the board and the budget committee as we move forward, if we agree to enter into a lease, is be able to match, if not, maybe a little bit more, what goes into the.
ETF.
ETF, to match the lease payment, if not, a little bit more. So if something does go wrong, we, we have that trust fund to fall back on.
So we haven't funded the ETF fund this year?
No, once it is funded, there'll be a little over twenty-five thousand dollars in it, that's for. Where I was gonna end with, but. Excuse me. Also, I have reached out to another company because.
Yeah, the interest rate at six point six nine, mm.
That I didn't have a say on.
I know, I know.
Comes directly from this company.
Well, you're shopping around though, right?
Yeah, this is, this seems to be the best company to work with. This is who the Town of Madison uses. I spoke to Chief Hayford over there. He has nothing but great dealings with them. Basically, when, every time they enter into a lease, they give them the quotes that they have for the vehicles and the equipment. They cut the checks to each vendor and we make a once a year payment to the leasing company. So rather than it being, you know, sixty, seventy thousand dollars at once, we're looking at fifteen to eighteen thousand dollars a year, depending on which, which option we go with.
And you're looking at this year to do this?
I would, I would like to, yeah. And the reason being is everything's gonna get more expensive, especially with the tariffs. And I'm trying to capitalize on what the state bids are now. I, I looked at, like I said, all the other cruisers and everything is kind of, it's slim pickings. Let me, I'll leave with that. A lot of the state bid dealerships have very minimal, if any, inventory at all. And what they do have would not be a suitable fit for the Town of Effingham. Being cars with turbos in them and stuff like that, which we do not need.
So your salary where your secretary, you're looking at approximately ten thousand left in that budget?
Correct.
And the rest of the money for the outfitting will come from within your budget?
I could, I could make the operating budget work. Another thing too is I was gonna outfit this as the K nine car and then move this one into where the seventeen is, being the, the part-time, to try to extend the longevity of it rather than it running forty-plus hours a week on the roads. Cause that adds the miles up on it and the engine hours up on it quick. I have reached out to a nonprofit called K nine United, which they will assist with equipping and outfitting K nine units. I haven't heard back from them yet, but basically you fill out an application and it's basically, who are you, who's your dog, and what equipment are you looking for? And I requested to see if they would assist us with the purchase of a K nine container for the backseat of the car, towels, the dog. If that's not the case, we also have the Safety and Equipment Trust Fund that we could purchase that out of for the dog. And you're looking at roughly thirty-five to four thousand dollars for a K nine container. And also piggybacking on that, the Ford explorers don't have rear air conditioning. So right now, the, the K nine car we have, I have to run a hose from the front air vent into the kennel in the summertime just so the dog can get air conditioning. So it's not only gonna be a better, you know, give us more room, give us better ground clearance. It's also gonna be safer for the, for the dog in the hot summer months.
Once you let it drive.
Yeah.
So.
Actually closed my driver's side air vents just to force more air through the passenger side with the hoses.
What's the timeframe on this lease? How many, and do you keep the car after?
Yeah, so it's, it's not like your standard, like, vehicle lease. It's basically you do the lease. And after the lease is up, it's the town's and we can do whatever we want with it.
So it's a four-year lease?
Yeah, it's not like, like you do, like, like a civilian lease where you lease it for four years and then at four years up, you have to buy it out at the end.
Or trade it.
Or trade it in. After the four years, the, the lease is over. We don't have to make any more payments, but we can still keep and run the cruiser. It's not like we have to make a decision.
We own the cruiser.
Correct, after the four-year lease. It's not, we have to make a decision after four years if we're gonna keep it or not. It's, it's just, it's basically just a, a payment.
Right.
Payment period is.
So for four years, you're looking at approximately sixty thousand, five hundred dollars for this vehicle, which is what they're saying anyhow.
Right, right. And this is for a policeman.
Lesson. Lesson.
And the, yeah, outfitting. Yeah, that's standard, I mean.
And I could obviously do it out of my equipment line. It would be over expend, but we'll need the board permission to do that. And we're all gonna be understanding why that's gonna be over expend for this year.
I would probably want to do a little bit more. Go for another quote.
As far as.
You say you had another person that you might wanna look.
For, for the equipment?
For the lease.
For the lease.
The job, was it lease or outfitting?
No, so the lease is, this is the best company to work with. The rest of them are very lacking communication. I've tried to get multiple responses a few times and I've never heard back. The outfitting, this was the cheapest quote. That's why I brought it forward. I've got one from a gentleman that's done previous cruisers. He's around fourteen to fifteen thousand. And then New England Vehicle Upfitters out of Newington was just over twenty. So I brought the, what was gonna be the most reasonable, cost-effective quote as far as the outfitting forward, rather than entertain paying twenty thousand dollars for.
I'd like to digest this a little bit and, you know, we could, you know, have a meeting.
Yeah.
Me too. And go through all our questions and all that stuff. I don't wanna make a decision tonight.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to, I wanted to put it on your radar.
And I, yeah, I like to have the budget committee, Scott, you know, be involved with it.
So will I.
Yeah, definitely.
I wanted to, I wanted to put it on your radar because it is, it's a completely new thing. And I'm trying to.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I'm trying to, you know, manage the fleet that we have and maintain the longevity of it, but still try to make it the most cost-effective option. Yes, there's interest involved, but it's not sixty, seventy thousand dollars at once.
Right.
So if we go to trial, let's say this year, we want them back those.
Yes.
And we have two yours and sergeants.
Yes.
Sergeants new, right?
Yes, that's a twenty twenty-four. It's got twenty thousand miles on it.
And yours, I don't.
It's got a hundred and eight as it sits right now. It's gonna blow up every day. This is why I'm having this conversation now. And it still needs substantial work to pass inspection this year.
Can you give us a description on each vehicle?
Yeah, I actually just did that for the CFP committee. I can forward it to you.
Yeah.
I'll, yeah, I can forward it all to you. But like, I remember I included you guys in that the twenty twenty needs another probably two thousand dollars worth of work to pass inspection in September.
See, it's going up. Last time it was seventeen hundred.
Well, I, I think it's gonna need brakes too, so.
Stop using the brakes. You're the police. You're supposed to go, not stop.
But, yeah, it needs that temperature exchanger in the exhaust system because it's a hybrid to pass inspection because it just keeps giving a check engine light, and that's a seventeen hundred dollar part.
It's good for the environment though.
Yeah.
If you use a tape and put it over the light.
Yeah, I wish that was.
It's not good for the, well, you just milk it for another six months. We're good anyway. We don't need inspection.
I tried that angle, looking to be honest, man.
Yeah, unfortunately, we have to uphold the law, so we have to obey them until it's no longer.
Well, law doesn't change. Your motor vehicle still has to be mechanically sound to drive, which means it still needs an inspection.
Correct. So this is why I wanted to bring this to your attention sooner rather than later, because I, I have a fear that when the state bid prices come out next year, it's gonna take our breath away.
So you're looking at this, within another month or so, could I have an answer for approval or something?
Yeah, so I talked to the, the gentleman at McMakin Chevrolet and he, when he provided me the quote, he's like, I'll put your name on it. He's like, but you have to let me know sooner rather than later. He's like, because my phone rings every day looking for one. I said, all right.
What color?
Yeah, this is in fourteen days, this thing.
Just out of curiosity, outside of Madison, how many other municipalities, yeah, municipalities?
That I don't know.
Would you mind just?
I can ask.
Asking the chiefs and say, hey, do you guys lease?
Yep.
I mean, I know like Wakefield, they're primarily, obviously Ford explorers. Ospey, I think that they're just buying them outright, but they just got another one, so they, you know, I don't.
Yeah, that one, I think it was a leftover from somewhere.
The chief's got right now?
Yeah, cause it's the older, or the other body style. The twenty twenty-five is a new body style. But I've talked to, like I said, Chief Hayford. He's the only one I know of, but I'll send a message out to the Chiefs Association to see if anybody else has had any dealings with it. Like I said, Chief Hayford couldn't have said anything highly of this. This is the, it's, I think it's the third vehicle they just signed a lease on this year. And they should be taking delivery of it any day now.
I think the county is going to, they're getting Tahos as well, so I don't know if they're, you know, if they lease, if they buy them outright or.
Right.
Caitlin, can you set up a meeting next? I'm not sure this week you guys are available.
Sure.
Can you have all your answers? Or we can do it next week, whatever.
I can do it this week. I can, I can get the information pretty quickly.
Wanna do it like a Thursday night or Thursday afternoon? No, yeah, it has to be Thursday.
I mean, if we, if we had to, I mean, if she had to work extra anyway, if we could do Friday, now that school's started.
Oh, that's why you were here.
I mean, selfish reasons.
Got it.
I wasn't late. Meeting starts at four thirty. I get out of work at four thirty. I left work, I left work early, we got.
Friday, I have to be in Manchester at seven.
Oh, that's fine.
Do we have time tomorrow before the building committee?
Before the building.
Ninety-one A God bless, we wouldn't be able to.
Yeah, we can't, I'll mean, post it.
I speak for the four hours, unfortunately.
Next week, next week, I can probably do.
Next week.
I guess I don't. Two questions, Dawn and Alissa.
Good at all. Thank you.
Bye.
All right, let's, I'm trying to get the meeting first. You wanna do it next week?
Whatever works for you guys.
Okay, we'll set up, we'll talk.
Monday works.
Does Monday work for everybody?
Yep, Monday's Sunday. It's the eighth, right?
It's the eighth, right?
Monday we have, uh, no, is that first or second Tuesday? That's the second Tuesday, Monday is Historic District Commission.
At six, you wanna do it before?
Sure.
Before we type two times, you're like four thirty?
I'm available whenever.
Chris, four thirty works, that way you get here in time and.
Well, I still won't be here on time, so I don't get to work till four thirty, I don't have a rocket ship.
You don't?
You want me to do five?
No, we can start at four thirty. Four thirty is fine.
Alright, uh, questions from the audience?
Oh, that's a very good point.
Are you available?
Are you available at four thirty?
I believe I can make that.
Yeah, they did ask, we were looking each term, we knew we're gonna, he was gonna be involved.
I just wanted to hear what. Steve's just got my back.
Thanks Steve.
Thanks Steve.
And I'm glad you were here tonight, cause I was hoping you would be when I brought this up.
Yeah, I have lots of resources. I have a couple for Tyler, but. Um, just about about uh about the cars, are are these Tahos, are these police packages?
Yes.
Okay, so they're not just converted grocery getters?
No.
Okay.
No, they're, there, there's a whole, actually, I can show you, there's a whole laundry list of things that these come with. Doesn't that, oh, you got that, yeah.
It's on the last page.
On the last page, that's everything that's included there, you know, they upgrade the suspension and everything. Yeah.
Cause it's, it's legal in this.
Yeah, I obviously support it, I just thought one of the first questions that came to mind is that they were actually.
And I knew that the, I knew the price tag was gonna be a conversation point, and I had a conversation with the gentleman that handles the state bid out of McMolken and he's like. I can get you a cheaper one by like eight hundred bucks or a thousand dollars, he's like, but you're gonna lose all of the safety features.
And so, safety features and like.
No, a lot of like.
Get your helmet.
Like the the, they have collision sensors in them too and stuff like that.
You wanna shut all that stuff off anyway?
Yeah.
It shakes, you don't want that, it's really bad.
I think it's designed geared towards police than than the civilian models.
Any additional questions?
I, I'm sorry, I just have one more.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
So if the town were to follow with this, we would, based on your rotation schedule, we would essentially have two of these under contract at all times, once we got to that point.
Potentially, yes, and.
Go away then, you said you're four years, you're not gonna replace it.
Well, this is where we're in a unique window, we have two vehicles that are up. So if we can push that one another two years to get. I don't know if that one will make it another four years, and that's why I'm concerned, that's why I'm trying to have this conversation now. If we're in a unique situation.
Two years, we're gonna put another one on, in two years, we're gonna put another one on, and then the process starts over again.
That's, that's why I wanted to.
Yeah, we uh put some money in ETF fund.
And this is why I wanted to have that conversation, cause I don't know. I don't know if that's gonna make it another, I I have a feeling it'll make it two more years, but I don't know if anything after that.
Okay, we'll have this discussion.
Hybrid batteries, if those go, it's.
We'll have this discussion Monday.
A lot of money to replace.
I just, I just found that last piece of data before we met on Monday.
Have your questions ready?
Research, yes, thank you.
Can, and if.
What's Monday?
Before we leave tonight, can we all get together and I can get a list of questions from you guys, that if I don't have the answers, you guys can have from Monday. Yeah.
They're gonna be messy.
That's good.
Alright.
Me too.
I'm going away. You're there next week. Bull's not far from there.
It's fine, I wish I could turn my brain off, but it's stuff like this that keeps me awake at night.
Welcome to the club.
Yeah.
Alright, this happens in my house until like twelve one o'clock in the morning.
Melissa?
Yeah, I was just wondering the name of the company that the lease purchase is for.
It's a tax exempt leasing corporation out of Thompson Station, Tennessee.
Sounds like an emergency, wanna get this done as soon as possible, but we checked with municipal leasing consultant out of Vermont. Barry, I think it's Barry Vermont.
Okay.
Is another option, they're usually at the NHMA conference and um have good luck with them at the county. Um, and then I think you said the state bid list, normally that comes out like October, but is the new one out?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, I looked.
Okay. And.
They they start soliciting them, I think in September, they start getting all the bids in and it comes out usually October, November. So, and I like I actually talked to McFarland Ford today just to see. What and if they had anything, and they have one turboed Explorer on the lot and everything else is twenty twenty six and it's just. Order them if you want them, there's nothing coming at any point. And McMolken actually, they ordered three hundred and fifty Tahos and they only got like a hundred and twenty five, he says. So everything else has been pushed again to twenty twenty six, so they can't even fill their order banks.
Wow.
And you did say all this is being worked into the capital improvement plan?
Yeah, so I met with the, I met with the CIP committee um a few weeks ago and actually brought up all the. My thoughts and where we're headed down the road of our cruiser longevities. And I know that it's, I don't wanna get to the point that we're putting more money into a car than what it's worth. Cause I, it's not fair to the taxpayers at all, so I'm trying to be proactive in looking at our fleet and what I can do to. You know, extend the longevity of the cars that we have right now.
Thank you for the question.
Any additional questions? Hey Tyler.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did some research. Announcements?
Real quick. We didn't give her a report.
Oh, shoot, sorry.
I was just about to say that, I was waiting to see if he, if he was gonna.
I apologize.
Am I good to go?
You're good to go.
Um, as as discussed earlier, there were two property buybacks that I had received the full payments for. Um, I did finalize one more, that would be due at the end of the month, uh, for another tax dated property they had reached out. Um, I'm finalizing the budget sheets, just had to enter a few things in, um, those will be sent out tomorrow. Um, attended meetings as well, besides the building subcommittee I had to meet last week because of my sickness. Um, and also had a meeting with consolidated with uh JT, so we went over some billing questions. And issues that we have with the phones. Um, and RFP, oh gosh, sorry. RFP um is gonna be posted and everything's gonna be sent out, we'll get those bids out and start looking at those. Um, also, I know you were meant to talk about the transfer station, I did get a call from BDS, who is our tire. Uh. Supplier, I'm gonna say supplier, thank you. Um, they should be picking up next week, there was a situation.
Put in the request for it.
Yeah, he put in a request last week and there was issues with BDS, they. Back in April, they said they created an account for the town of Effingham.
They never did.
The the person never did, so when I reached out and said, I need a pickup. They had to wait for the manager to come back to go ahead and set up a new account. So now that's all set, but the next pickup right now will be until next week, but I did ask if they're sooner, if they could.
I think, yeah, I talked last weekend, I think you said they had a hundred and eighty tires, but they said they can pick up usually maybe three hundred?
That I don't know, I know usually it was around two hundred is when they would get picked up.
Okay.
Um, so I have a concern, if we just set that account up, do we still get the same pricing? Because.
I I'm gonna double check, if I.
Because hopefully, because we literally put it on our ordinance, so based on that.
What happened is when I sent that information out when we were doing the ordinance, the gentleman sent me the pricing. So when he sent me the pricing, that's what I used on the ordinance. So that was back in December, right, yeah, December, cause January was that time. So when I did reach out, I got, I got a double check, everything seemed the same, the only thing that was difference was. The um, I think the small tires, the nineteen.
You had a, yeah.
It was.
A lawnmower tractor, tractor tires. Wasn't in that one?
Oh, yeah, we had.
Well, yeah, that that one's considered, it's up to the twenty one inches or something like that, is four dollars and fifty cents, which I believe we set at four. If I'm correct.
Yeah. So it's not the same.
That's the only one I've seen, I've seen a difference on. And I haven't gotten to ask them why there was a difference yet, they just talked to me earlier, so.
So we, obviously we need to make some sort of adjustment then.
That is one thing that'll need to be configured.
So just getting updated.
But back in December, they sent me, I think, three dollars and fifty cents, but I'll double check that before I speak out of turn here.
Anything else?
That's all.
Any questions?
Nope.
No announcements?
No announcements.
Public comments? Alyssa?
First of all, I flew over here, cause thanks for having YouTube for me, I'm the only one that's ever on there, appreciate it. Glad Tyler was here, not out on the road.
He's not a road now.
Aren't you?
Before I gave my public comment, I just wanted to say, and it's not cause I share the last name of one of your board members. I just wanted to commend all of you for the great work that you're doing for the town of Effingham. Um, just to watch you work as a group, the way it looks, the way it feels, it's more welcoming. And you're really doing a lot of good, good work, so thank you, I just, and lots of people wearing multiple, multiple hats and. Crazy motels and everything else that's going on and you're just keeping your cool and you're keeping it running, so.
It's tough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I, I've known a lot of politicians in my life and you're not them, so thank you.
Thank you.
Um, but the reason I mainly came over, what caught my attention, I didn't look at the agenda ahead of time, had I known that the comedian that is Rick Sager was going to be here. I would have been here at the beginning, um, love that guy. Big advocate of housing, done a lot of research and work and um. Housing activist that I am. That property, the PK, is a tremendous opportunity for the town of Effingham and for the region. And I'm just asking to proceed cautiously, getting it on the tax rolls, great, obviously, help offset the school bill, right? But we have a, we have an opportunity to do something really great in Effingham, instead of being the homeless. Dump at the town line that we were for all those years, we could do something with affordable housing, hopefully, or workforce housing. Um, I saw a news piece not that long ago where Amazon wants to move into the town of Boreham. And the town owns the property in Maine. It doesn't close and the property doesn't transfer until Amazon goes through the processing, gets all the permitting and everything's locked up and then the property transfers. I'm just asking to take your time with that particular piece of property. Um, it has so much potential and. There's other properties right in that immediate area that are also surplus state properties that they're considering releasing. Um, it can have a really great corner um for Ospey, Effingham, the whole region. From the county hat, we have extreme difficulty attracting new workers because, well, where are they gonna live? We've had county employees over my five and a half years of being there that lived in their cars and showered at work. Just so they could work, um, it's not going away and unless we start having some public private partnerships, we're never gonna get anywhere. Um, so that's. And just a fun fact, the cost of housing in our area, between twenty twenty, uh, yeah, twenty twenty and twenty twenty three went up fifty nine percent. So imagine if, if you had a house before COVID. If not, after the fact, you're basically screwed and there's a lot of twenty and thirty somethings that are basically screwed. Um, that are hardworking, they get up, they show up every day and I'm just asking to take your time with that piece of property. Ask if you can put conditions on it, consider who's buying and what they plan to do with it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Food for time, yes.
Just one second, one thing Alyssa said, it was very nice that Nate is here. And we're asking some questions of Governor Warren. I appreciate that. Thanks Nate.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Going to non-public?
Uh, is there a need for one?
I think so.
Non-public?
Um, it was identified on. How would you do it? No, uh, yeah, so it'd be. Standby.
Oh, it's gonna be uh. It's gonna be right here.
I make a motion to go into non-public on the RSA ninety one A colon three, Roman numeral two C.
My second.
Oh, in favor?
Simmons, aye?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Hey, I did tell Rick you said.